Senator Rish, be sure you recognize.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and good afternoon, Madam Speaker. We're at the point in the agenda on the matter of Bill 437-31. I move that the version as substituted Committee on Health and Human Services, Economic Development, Senior Citizens, and Election Reform referred back to committee and as further substituted by the committee be entertained in the committee of the whole, and I move that we resolve in the committee of the whole for the purposes of entertaining a bill 437 and the version I just read, and that Senator Rodriguez, who was the chairperson of Committee of Jurisdiction, shall preside over this committee of the whole.
On the motion, hearing no objections, so we'll go. ...
Good afternoon. The Committee on Economic Development now convenes this committee of the whole to discuss Bill 437-31 as substituted by the committee, further substituted, referred back to the committee and substituted by the committee. And every senator should now have a copy. And this is also the version that is on the legislative website. Before we proceed, I'd like to introduce the panel here. We have Mr. Mason, Mr. Pat Mason from Attorney General's Office, Ms. Mooney, Chief Deputy Attorney General Phil Tadinco, we have Talin Titanow, Superintendent of the O E, Mr. Karpang Lina Gida, and Henry Titanow of the Governor's Office. Okay, so we'll proceed. I'd like to recognize Senator Espisho.
Thank you very much, Ms. Chairman. Ms. Chairman, I asked to be recognized before you laid out the rules of engagement and probably provided each member with a couple-minute overview on the bill and then the panel to make some presentations before going section by section. But in the interest of presenting this bill on those areas that I believe there could be needed agreement, I refer your attention to Section 9, which starts on page eight. Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna ask that you allow me to make this motion that's not in the sequence of this presentation, but it's going to remove a lot of discussions on an area that I think this body would agree, that on line 18, beginning after schools, to put a period, so you would delete using ARRA funds and lease financing. And in the sentence, we'll continue with Gida Shao. And then I move to delete lines 20 through 23 that requires Gida to take whatever balance is left over in the ARRA funds and use this to assist with the financing. And so I want to make a motion that reflects what happened in the markup meeting, but it's not reflective in this bill right now. And I say that with all due respect, and I thank you also for your work in hearing this bill and preparing the several versions that we have before. And so I'd like to move that this time.
Okay. Have there any objections? No objections? Motion passes.
And then thank you, Mr. Chairman, and colleagues. Now that that passed, I want to direct your attention to the legislative intent, and just so someone in here doesn't think that we're still trying to go after ARRA funds, or this bill still tries to go after ARRA funds. On page two, I just wanted to delete the sentences on line one and two that ends in 60 million. So the sentence would read, "The government has available certain funds from the American Reinvestment and Recovery Act, ARA, approximately $60 million." I want to delete that. And then delete further down the sentence where it starts on line six, "This leaves a government shortfall of approximately $79 million." And so this paragraph would read, "The Department of Education estimates the cost of the renovation, expansion, construction, and rehabilitation of Guam's public schools to be about $139 million." And that would be the leftover of that paragraph.
Any objections? No objections? Motion passes.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator Espisho. The way we'll do this, we'll have the author, Senator Guthers, if you'd like to briefly discuss your bill. And then we'll open it up to the other members. We'll recognize the vice speaker first and open it up to the other members who wish to make any comments or ask any questions of the panel. It's here before us. And then we'll go section by section, if there's any amendments or anything that needs to be done. Senator Guthers, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I also want to welcome our panel here today. We're very honored with your presence. And I'd like to thank my colleagues for their patience on this bill. I think we'll work it through to the satisfaction of everyone, to just focus on the real goal, and the goal is to help our schools. Mr. Chairman and colleagues, I conceptualized Bill 437 in an effort to figure out how to fix our dilapidated school facilities. This measure has gone through the requisite Legislative Committee and public hearing process, during which it has received useful input for amendments by way of the Attorney General's Office and the Guam Economic Development Authority. As well, Governor's Calvo's office and at least one member, a former chairperson and longstanding member of the Education Board, publicly expressed support for this bill. Our schools and facilities, really in many ways, are run down. We have leaking roofs, cramped and insufficient learning areas, and the need for modern rehabilitation or rebuilding of facilities to service the needs of education in the 21st century. All schools are in need of some sort of renovation, expansion, construction, or rehabilitation. DOE has come up with concrete numbers for the cost of the renovations, expansion, construction, and rehabilitation of Guam's public schools. And the last figure that we as members of the legislature saw was an estimate of $139 million, which was a very conservative estimate done by a contractor hired by the school system to study the need for our school restoration. So $139 million was their estimate. It could be quite conservative in terms of the number. However, it's no secret that our government is financially strapped, but still obligated to provide essential services for all the people of Guam of school age. Moreover, the government is unlikely to be able to afford payments from its current or next budget for the costs of the necessary renovation, expansion, construction, and rehabilitation of the schools, including collateral equipment, school buses, special education buses, and even bus shelters. Bill 437 will help leverage and utilize the government's ability in quick fashion to issue lease revenue bonds and our certificates of participation and lease obligations to provide financing for the renovation, expansion, construction, and rehabilitation work on all the public school facilities on Guam. There are several components of Bill 437. First, we have the lease, leaseback financing. Gida has the option to, in this bill, and is authorized in this bill, to issue limited obligation project revenue bonds to make a loan to the awardee for the purpose of financing the costs of the rehabilitation, construction, renovation, expansion, and all costs related with binding obligations of the government through the Guam Economic Development Authority. The measure in Section 4 also calls for all agreements to include collateral equipments in all construction and equipment necessary to provide basically a turnkey option to include infrastructure and maintenance needed by the schools. Mr. Chairman and members, you know, we're sort of at a crossroads in public education on Guam. This legislature, through the leadership of our speakers, Chair of the Committee on Education, has done a tremendous job in assisting our schools in areas ranging from the policy level by constructing a school board consistent with the needs of our school system, by assisting with great enthusiasm the Department of Education in areas such as learning goals, parental involvement, funding as much as the legislature is able to assist our schools. And every member of this legislature is committed to the importance of public education on our island, as are the representatives of the executive branch of this government. We soon will have in place a permanent superintendent, at least for the duration of the contract that was recently let out by the school board, who hopefully will bring with him a high degree of commitment, motivation, creativity, and hard work to our school system. But as our new superintendent arrives, he will quickly learn that our schools are in disrepair, some of them posing serious safety hazards to children, teachers, and staff. We also know that the Obama administration made available monies to Guam to help fix some of the schools, called the ARRA monies, but it is not enough to fix all of the schools. And the genesis of this bill is to ensure that we fix all of the schools. And that's the reason, Mr. Chairman and colleagues, why this bill was introduced. So I'm hopeful through the engagement here today, this interaction, this committee of the whole, with the technical experts of this government in place, working with us, and our acting Superintendent of Education, Attorney General's Office representatives, bond council representatives, and others, that we will be able to make this work, this bill work. And I look forward to positive contributions from my colleagues later in making amendments to the bill, so that we all can demonstrate our real commitment to the importance of helping our schools and our schoolchildren and our people in general. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity.
Thank you, Senator Guthers. Vice Speaker Cruz, you're recognized.
Just for clarification, Mr. Chairman, are these just opening statements, or are we just, are we going to be able to make amendments at this time?
Yes, these are opening statements.
Just opening statements?
Yes.
All right, then, I need to read. I just want to note for the record, Mr. Chairman, that we have two representatives from the administration here, Mr. Pangalina from Gida and Mr. Titanow from Governor's Office. And would either one of them be able to assert that they are representing the administration at this time and can speak for the administration as we go through the discussion on this bill? Are either one of them authorized? If that could be answered, I...
Yeah, that's, you mean, our, yeah, that's why we're here. We're here to speak on behalf of the administration.
And the administration has reviewed this most recent, well, this iteration of the bill?
The several versions that we've had, that we've received, we have reviewed.
And the position of the administration is in support, or...
Yeah, we're supportive of the bill. We feel that these renovations and repairs are needed, and we feel that the classrooms are in a condition that is just not acceptable for our students, so...
Thank you. I think, I think all of us can agree that the schools are in major disrepair and in need of amen, of some kind of major renovation, if not completely reconstructed. Mr. Chairman, my concern is, is I've gone through every single version of the bill, and I cannot tell how much this is going to cost us. I have here the fiscal note that was submitted by the Bureau of Budget Management Research, and it says that the impact is zero, zero to this general fund, zero to the special fund, zero to everything. But then at the very bottom, there's a footnote that says, "The bill has a potential of additional funding impact. However, it's present for, in its present form, that impact cannot be determined at this time." So I looked at the original bill, and I looked at the bill that's now before us, and I still cannot say how much this is going to cost us, what is the cap, how much authority are we giving the governor? Are we giving him authority to sign up to $139,000 a year? How much are we allowing him to agree to as to annual repayment schedule? There's nothing in this that I can see unless somebody can point it out to me. Is it 139? We're taking everything from business privilege tax, including the syntaxes that we impose to try to address cancer patients and cancer education, and we're taking everything. But, and we don't know how much can be taken. There's no cap. It's carte blanche, and I cannot support that. And I'll have all of my amendments, but... I'd just like to read to the government officials... I'd just like to read to the government officials here a letter that their governor sent to us on February the 6th, 2012. "In signing these bills, I support the purpose and intent of each piece of legislation which is designed to protect the health, welfare, safety of the residents of Guam by creating different kinds of things. However, while each of these new laws require additional output and resources from the implementing or enforcing agencies or departments," and he caps this, this is in bold in the letter from the governor to the speaker, "no additional appropriations are included in the statute that would enable the agency to carry out such enforcement and implementation." Then he goes on, and he goes, "Unfortunately, the legislative mandates seem to be the rule and not the exception, and it lends itself to the situation where, once again, I am forced to prioritize funding one aspect of health, safety, and welfare to the detriment of the other. In the worst-case scenario, the result is such imbalance as the lawsuit, like with the one far too many lawsuits the government, such as the landfill receivership, the mental health, federal team fiasco, law enforcement personnel seeking increments, and the recent individual taxpayer lawsuit. Because of the significance of the legislation proposed by Minutentaiunu Leysutu in Guam in these bills delivered to my action, I cannot in good conscience refuse to acknowledge their importance by refusing to sign them into law. However, because I also recognize the goal of the new laws is to afford additional protections to our community, I am now tasked with trying to identify funding to carry out these programs. No easy feat with a carcass that is the general fund. I therefore beseech the good senators of the Minutentaiunu Leysutu in Guam to include an appropriation in all bills which call for the expenditure of funds for the effective implementation of the programs which are statutorily imposed upon the executive branch. You hold a purse strings in this government, and consequently, it is your obligation to ensure that you have the financial resources to carry out these mandates for our people so our people are not saddled by yet another lawsuit to command this government to provide them with the programs entitlements that the legislature has determined their statutory right. I ask the government representatives, because I looked at the transcript from the hearing, and I believe Mr. Pangalinen was asked directly, how are we going to pay back this $139,000? We take it out. And I think there was a comment that it may come from the current budget of DOE. There wasn't no clarification as to where that was going to come from. There is nothing in this bill or any discussion that I've seen or heard since this of where the administration is going to find the money, except to take it from the business privilege tax, which means that the Healthy Futures Fund is deprived of money, which means the cancer patients and the patients that we're sending off while in for medical care are not going to be attended to. This is the big boss's letter to us, and I ask you to find me somewhere in this bill where it says how we're going to pay this on an annual basis, and what's the maximum. What happens if they come back in and say they want $15,000 in, I mean, $15 million in annual repayment? Where's that going to come from? Mr. Titunot?
Senator? Yeah. You know, I think we, the administration also agrees that, you know, there are things we do have to balance here, which is exactly why we have asked that we look at the DOE budget and work with them on affording this. We agree that this is an absolute need, and I think one of the appropriate questions should also be, where does this fit on a priority list for DOE? If the safety in the classrooms is a priority for the agency, then we would obviously want to work with them within their budget to identify funding for this. As far as the actual amount and the figure that we're looking at, you know, that's really going to come from the discussions we have with the agency on what the final statement of need is. And I think Carl's role has really been to help identify the financial vehicle that we can use to get this done. I can't answer right now what the exact debt service amount is, but what I can assure you is that we will work with them, and we do think that we do have a financial vehicle to make it happen, so...
As I understand it, maybe I understand that I'm taking my information from the media, which probably I shouldn't, but I understand that at one point, the administration requested all departments to put a 15% set aside. And if I remember correctly, Ms. Titunot sent the governor a letter that says a 15% set aside would mean one payday that's not made at GDOE. So I'm trying to figure out where is this money come from, and do I, do we assume from your statement that it is still the position of the administration that any amount of money, whatever the amount's going to be, to pay back this, whatever we're getting ourselves into, is going to be taken off the hide of GDOE? And is it clear to GDOE that it's going to be cut from them, you know?
Yeah, I can't answer for GDOE, but what I can tell you is that we do feel that there are ways that we can work with DOE on their budget to afford this.
So...
I can't answer as far as...
I just wanted very clear to the members of this legislature and to GDOE that the position that you're taking and you're asserting at this point is that if they need to pay back $7 million a year, if they need to pay back 7, 10 million, if they need to pay back 15 million a year, the 15 million a year is going to be taken from the current GDOE or whatever the GDO appropriation's budget is going to be for the year. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, we do feel that the focus of, or the prioritization of this is at a high level for DOE, and we would feel that they would want to pay for the safety of their classrooms. Yes, absolutely.
I just want my colleagues to understand that I have now asked that question several times, and it is clear. Anything that you decide that you're going to do with this bill, the amount of annual repayment is going to be taken from the GDOE budget. Thank you. I'll wait for my amendments and make other comments.
Okay, we'll recognize Senator Duennias, and then Speaker Wompette.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity to provide an opening statement. First of all, I want to say thank you to the panel. I know it's taken a lot of patience over the weeks now that we've had to assemble to obviously deal with this very complex matter. It's not complex to want to fix schools. It's not complex to want to take care of our children. Obviously, the process of how we do it is complex. I want to say first off that I appreciate the first introduction of amendments that was done by Senator Respeju, as that's what senators had discussed in the markup meeting. Notwithstanding maybe some reservations from anyone else, the fact of the matter is that those that are going to vote on this bill made that clear in committee. So I want to express my appreciation for that, and now we can move forward to hopefully make this a final, good product that everybody can work with. I want to just say while the Attorney General's here as well, that was one of their first statements in the first version of this bill in terms of the objection. The second point I want to make is telling you, you deserve of all acting capacities and all acting appointments, a Grammy, really, for the job that you've done. And the reason why I'm quite pleased that this is, this ARRA has been removed is I know that you've worked very hard to ensure that you could see through the procurement. This body has introduced legislation and passed legislation that will enable you to deal with protests, and I look forward to the update soon in terms of what you've been able to accomplish and to ensure that we don't lose $1 of their ARRA funding with your current efforts to see it through by September 30. So for the balance of the time, I'm going to propose some amendments as well. And once again, I thank the panel for their patience, understanding, and I think we're going to have a good final product by the time we're done. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator. Speaker Wompette?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to just kind of dovetail on what the vice speaker said, and I've pulled out the committee report, and I will quote, of course, what was the response of Mr. Pangalinen, Mr. Carl Pangalinen from GIDEA, that when Senator Pangalinen had asked about the repayment and the ceiling and how it's going to be paid back, and the response is that, again, in the last part of your testimony, you indicated that we wouldn't have what we needed to work with DOE to identify some of the cuts. And obviously, the ideal situation was that whatever cuts that were to be identified were going to be proportionate to the debt service for the issue and for this project. And then the question was asked, would DOE's budget then be cut to pay for this? And Mr. Carl Pangalinen said, I mean that it would be, that would be the proposed solution, that there's obviously no room in the government expenditures right now to afford this financing. DOE wants their schools to be repaired. I think they need to somehow incorporate this into their budget, and I believe there has been several studies that identified a number of ways that DOE can cut down their budget, and we're going to need to do an amortization schedule and find out exactly what nuts, what must, what nuts going to be, but that was in the last part of his testimony. And lastly, we were looking, and Mr. Pangalinen also stated, that we have to flush out the numbers, but the early numbers, roughly $80 million in new monies, and 80 million now is different from the 139, that we'll have to borrow outside of the ARRA, we're looking at $7 million a year. So when the speaker said then that because the original bill was factoring in the 60 million for the, from the ARRA, plus the 80, would have been 140 million, and 139 apparently is the, at least the number that's floating around, so that means then that we're not looking at $70 million that will come out of DOE's budget, but rather possibly $15 million. Now, here are some thoughts, of course, that for everyone to consider, and that, you know, the question, of course, and I've been accused of trying to stall this or play some tactic to delay this bill from moving forward, and that's far from the truth. But now, of course, there are the things that has come forward, and I like these thoughts to be considered, that now then, of course, since the move is to really try to get the ARRA funding, the 60 million, but it's not really full 60 million, because portions of that, almost one-third of that really is for STEM, and yes, the renovation of two schools to provide for the STEM program, and the rest of it really will be for the other schools. So what then is the rush now, since the ARRA timelines have been removed, so therefore, you know, there is not that real rush to say we've got to spend this money now because DOE has moved forward, the legislature has passed legislation to expedite the process for any type of protest. The other is, is that GPA has already established a mechanism to fund renovations to the schools that directly impacts, of course, water and power uses, and that the savings, and see, this is out-of-the-box, you know, thinking as well, that really was in another bill, but has been totally ignored, but it's the exact same concept that GPA is using, that the utility, the savings in utility costs would fund the cost of the projects. So then, if you're having, and then, so we have that in place again. The third is, perhaps the financing that's included in this, you know, bill then should be looked at of the context with the budget and with the, definitely the budget law. So now the question is, and there, you know, is that, and which everyone would have to consider, is that do we now then, in advance, knowing what it is that's going to happen with this bill, is that we must be, we must have the courage then, and the budget law is to carve out then anywhere between 7 million to 15 million from DOE's budget? And do we all have that fortitude to do just that? Then recently, we had passed a master plan, and then perhaps the funding again of that plan along with the GPA projects could be the first step in trying to help our schools. So that, you know, of course, should all be considered. And the last thing then that everyone should consider is that DOE's budget for this fiscal year is $205 million of local funds. DOE's budget that they have submitted to the legislature, their request, is $263 million. The governor's submittal for DOE, now remember, this year's $205 million. The governor's request for DOE for this year is $202 million. So it's 3 million short, as it is right now. So in addition then, we're looking at approximately, because we're not dealing with 80 million anymore, because 80, at 80 million, that's $7 million of DOE's budget. So if we're looking at 139 million, it's closer to 15 million. So therefore, we have to look at 18 million dollars to cut DOE's budget. And if that is the case, and we're going to make that move, then it would stand, it would make sense that in this bill, and I will proffer the amendment, and I don't know where it's going to go, but the amendment will be, is that we then concurrently make the same cuts as it is right now to DOE's budget for, during the budget, in the budget law itself in this office. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Speaker Wompette. Is there anyone else that wishes to do an opening? If not, we're going to go section by section. Senator Respeju, you recognize?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I really want to thank the panel for being here and helping guide this discussion, a discussion that I think we can all agree is long overdue. And I certainly appreciate the concerns raised with respect to how is this massive reconstruction project or repair project system-wide going to be financed? And I think it's a little bit premature, however, to say that it's going to come specifically from DOE's budget, because, Mr. Chairman, as we know, DOE's budget comes from the general fund. And so when we look at DOE, we look at them as an instrumentality of the executive branch, of this entire government. And so if the payback is $7 million a year and DOE gets 120 million now, it doesn't mean that they're going to get 113 million. It might mean that they're going to get 127 million. So to say that we're going to put this on the back of DOE because they have the largest budget, I think it's really not fair to DOE. And if you recall, Mr. Chairman, the legislature prides itself year after year in its ability to shave as much as $50 million from DOE's budget requests. And as the previous speaker pointed out, DOE always submits a request far beyond what the government can accommodate. And so I believe in one fiscal year, the request was reduced to as much as $50 million. And if we look at DOE in totality and encourage DOE that any savings they realize will be reinvested into DOE, I think you'll probably get more cooperation from DOE to say, yeah, this is absolutely something that we need for the clients that we serve, for our kids that we serve. But, you know, with all due respect, Mr. Titunot, if you, if you put it out there to say that DOE is going to pay for this, DOE is barely able to make payroll as it is. The governor withheld 15% from their budget. He made a commitment to give it back. I don't believe he's given it back yet, otherwise we would have heard something. So I, I think, Mr. Chairman, if we can just focus on what are the needs? What are the needs? And if we can recognize that the need to repair all of our schools is an obligation that all of us have to stand up for, then I think we can progress this discussion along, and we can get GIDEA's guidance to ask them if these mechanisms proposed by Senator Guthers and others is absolutely doable. You know, I've spent 10 years now in this legislature, and I'm fascinated that we're arguing at the outset of how we're going to pay for this, when I recall, there was no money to pay COLA, but we paid it. There was no money to pay EITC, but we paid it. There was no money to pay tax refunds. Not only this last two go around, but in the previous legislature, those, those things weren't funded, but those were monies that were borrowed. There was no money to pay the Lajon landfill project, the legisla- The legislature never appropriated a single penny until such time they were able to go and offer a financing scheme, but for the initial phases of that project, and we've argued, we've argued that how can this executive branch move forward absent any legislative appropriations, but they were guided by the permanent injunction and the third party under receivership, rather, and so they just circumvented the legislature's role in that. There was no money to bail out GMH year after year, but we provided as much resources as possible. There was no money to build the six schools that were built through the same funding mechanism proposed in this bill. The administration, previous administration was able to build new schools based on a municipal lease-back program and pledge compact impact funds, knowing how uncertain receiving those funds are year after year. And that's what my, my comment is, Mr. Chairman, and I, and I think as we go through the bill and determine if this is doable, then obviously, the next question is, how is it going to be paid back? But I, I don't want to discourage any member, although the administration said that DOE will be obligated anyway, it's not, it's not the governor's call in the end if this is going to come from DOE, because this legislature is the one that passes the budget. So I don't want that to be a discouragement in wanting to move forward, but to recognize that whether it comes from DOE or elsewhere, it comes from this entire government of Guam, and we've been able to do things as a body, as a legislature, over the decade without any, any funding source in sight. And so, so that's where my focus is going to be, and I thank you for the opportunity to present some comments on this bill.
Thank you, Senator Espisho. I will move on now, Senator Adet, before we move on to Section One.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I certainly rise in support of the bill, however, I do have my concerns about how the bond is to be repaid, and if the administration is saying that it's going to come out of the hide of DOE, just looking at last year's budget, on what was budgeted for the general fund, in order to come up with seven million dollars a year to pay for that bond, you will practically have to zero out any budget for telephones, you'll have to zero out the budget for water and sewer services, we would have to budget, we would have to zero out the amount of, telephones is about a point four million dollars, miscellaneous, there's an amount of two point four million dollars that would have to get zeroed out, supplies and materials, you'll have to zero that out from one point four million dollars, contracts, there's one point eight million, that would have to be zeroed out, and then water and sewer services, about two million dollars. So in essence, what we're going to have is, we're going to have a department that basically has a lot of bodies that will be able to provide the instruction, but there won't be any funds available. So I bring this out simply to emphasize the fact that it cannot come solely from DOE's budget, and so, and so I do express those reservations, and that we're going to need to take a look outside of DOE as to how we're going to be able to fund this particular bond, and because I do recognize the need for the renovation of the schools and the collateral equipment, I certainly will commit to sitting down and taking a look at where else can we find to be able to come up with an additional seven million dollars approximately a year to pay for this, to service this debt. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Adet. Senator Yamashita?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I really do depend on the realities to be put on the table. I really do begin more, more and more, I do understand what has to be considered in making particular decisions. I really do depend on members to present those realities, as I depend on members of this, this body to be hopeful, to be hopeful and to be focused, and as one of the previous speakers said, that no matter what has been presented in front of this, this body in previous terms, as well as in the current term, we've always found a way, or they have always found a way. And, Mr. Speaker, I am depending on that because of the thirty-one thousand students that do go to these schools, and unless you are one of those families who sends your kid to this school, you really don't know what that's like. If you haven't been to GW lately, you have no clue what they go through. I was at Antalan before they got moved to Tejon. We are a JFK Islander, where then we did double session at GW. We also did double session at Oceanview Middle. Unless we aggressively and assertively address these, these conditions and these situations, Mr. Speaker, they're only going to get worse. And the amounts of money needed to fix them so that our kids and our teachers are safe and sound, so that they can focus on learning, and on achieving, and on being safe, it isn't going to happen. So while I understand times are tough, and I understand that there's going to be some budget cuts that are going to have to happen all around, I am hopeful that we are going to ask the questions, receive the answers, and then move forward because we have to, and I don't have to repeat that we all do know that this is about our future. But I do, again, suggest that unless you send your kid to these schools, unless you put them on the broken buses or the rusty special ed vans, you have no clue what this is like. Unless you walk in these shoes, Mr. Speaker, you don't know what it's like to have a kid come home, to talk about how hot it is, about how it stinks, about how it rained and it's leaking, about how they don't have this and how they don't have that. And so, yes, there have been so many versions, there have been broken dialogue, there has been this and there has been that, but I know that now, we can move forward because we have to, Mr. Chairman, we have to. The thirty-one thousand kids are depending on this, and as much as we give two hundred million dollars every year to our system, we're wasting money, because they're not conditions that are conducive to learning. And even our new schools are facing issues. And I know, I'm singing to the choir, because the people in this body are the ones who got JFK up and running and have moved so many things, but I just hope that the perspective is reality-based, but as Speaker McGanney Height said, it has to be laced with hope. It has to be. We have to find the way, and we have to make it work. Otherwise, the holes, the huge holes in all of these buckets will never get plugged up, and we're going to continue to waste our money. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator. Are there any others? If not, we'll go to Section One. Any comments on Section One? Senator Guthers, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to move that we delete the language beginning on line five of Section One, that starts with "our," so delete this sentence, "Our schools and facilities, such as the Guerrero Administration Building, which contains the Department of Education, offices are rundown, leaking, cramped, and insufficient." And the reason I suggest this is because this is not a school facility, it's an administrative office, and we can save that for another day. I would also like to suggest on line seven, that the last two words, the last two words on line seven start this way, "The Department of Education facilities are inadequate." So change these, the word "these" to "Department of Education facilities." So the new, the new reading of this section would start this way, beginning on line two, that would remain in Section One, "Presently, the deplorable conditions of Guam's public schools, combined with an ever-increasing number of students, hinder the educational development of our youth. Department of Education facilities are inadequate to properly service the needs of education," and it continues all the way to the end of line eleven as written.
Thank you, Senator. Are there any objections? No objection, motion passes. Senator Guthers?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to inquire from my colleagues on, okay, on lines fifteen, the bill as sent from the committee talks about lease revenue bonds and our certificates of participation and lease obligations, and if anyone wants to add any other possible options, this would probably be the place to enter that language, if anyone wants to do that. Because the bill talks about lease revenue bonds and our certificates of participation and lease obligations, so if there's, anyone wants to add any other option there, they can probably insert it there. If not, then that's fine.
Is there anyone else on Section One? Speaker Wampat?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I'd like to take everyone's attention to page two, and I think these are the numbers that we need to work with, because I, well, actually, let's go back to one where it says, no, 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 where it says, the, no, page two, I'm sorry. We're not going to, and I know this is only in the intent, where we're saying that there are approximately sixty million of Ara monies that are available for the schools. Oh, you deleted that already? Oh, okay, so, so, wait, so which, what's deleted? Can you get on the mic?
Speaker Wampat, before we proceed, you know, since we do have the panel here, we've invited to come, you know, maybe what we could do is, if we have any questions for the panel, as we move forward, or before we go section by section, we can do that at this point, and then the amendments can be made afterwards.
Okay, that, that sounds good. But, so then, my question is, of course, although it's deleted, and that was the question is that, and the vice speaker had alluded to this, is that there's no dollar amount, basically, or a ceiling in terms of how much is to be borrowed. In the original language, of course, there was a discussion, because the idea was to include the sixty million dollars of Ara, and that the total estimate that was given by SEDEXO was a hundred and thirty-nine million to be able to, you know, modernize, you know, expand, rehabilitate the schools. So after deleting, of course, the sixty million now, that basically is telling us that the seventy-nine million dollars, then, is that going to be the amount that now the government will be borrowing, or will the government be borrowing a hundred and thirty-nine million dollars? And I think that needs to be established in this bill. We can't, this can't be an open-ended bill without a specific dollar amount that GIDEA would go out, you know, to borrow. So if SEDEXO is one hundred and thirty-nine million, and so it means then, does that mean then now we're going to go out and borrow a hundred and thirty-nine million dollars? Because the Ara monies are no longer factored in here.
If I may, Madam Speaker, that's a very good point that you bring up. You know, this entire time that we've been contemplating this bill, you're right, we've been working off of what we know as a baseline with the SEDEXO report that came in at a hundred and thirty-nine million. We were also working off of the sixty million that was for Ara monies. I brought this point up also during the public hearing, whether that sixty million would go to address everything in the hundred and thirty-nine million dollar report, but as a, as a financial exercise, we've been running a lot of our scenarios, our financial scenarios, based on roughly eighty million dollars. So that would take the one thirty-nine minus the sixty, and I think Telling would be better able to answer the use of the sixty million, and if that went toward bringing down that hundred and thirty-nine SEDEXO number.
Of the sixty million, about, about five, I think, will go to STEM, and another five will go to technology. So basically, there's about fifty million of the sixty that was planned to go into CIP. So I, so it might, yeah, instead of eighty, maybe ninety.
For the purposes of your cap, and based off of the, the, just the logic that we had been using since the inception of the introduced bill, and what Telling just said, I guess eighty-nine million is now the number.
Okay, but then we're also forgetting that we've just deleted the entire Ara amount. So that means we're not factoring that at all. So that's why I'm saying now, and the reason for that too as well, is that it has, whatever the requests have been provided in terms of how they're going to use the monies, have been approved already by US DOE. Secondly, we've also made an agreement with DOE, I mean, US DOE, is that we were going to use, you know, portions of the, I mean, the Ara monies to be able to fund DOE in terms of personnel, which means we have to provide, of course, now and replace those Ara monies. And if we're going to now go back again and say that we want to reprogram these monies, the fifteen million or ten million, then it means going back to DOE and, uh, US DOE, and what guarantee are we going to have right now that that would actually happen?
I'm not sure I understand your, your question. The amounts that I was talking about, the STEM and the technology, were in the original grant application.
You're right. So what we're saying is that we took all of the sixty million, approximately sixty million of the Ara monies out of this bill.
Right.
See, the plan originally was to use that amount, and then to use, and then to borrow the difference, which is seventy-nine, to make a hundred and thirty-nine. So, but since we've now deleted the sixty million, we're really looking at a hundred and thirty-nine million dollars to be borrowed.
Right. The fifteen million in CIP money that was formerly Ara is, will be used to fix the schools, so the difference between the one thirty-nine and fifty is...
Okay, so fifty million is, okay, fifty million, because I think we have language of, I thought it was forty-one million that's left for just CIPs, not fifteen, the amount that we received was forty-one million, zero, seven, three, three, seven, zero. That that was going to be available for just renovations of the schools and modernization of the school.
Yeah, it's my understanding that the one thirty-nine million that SEDEXO calculated included A and E costs, so the fifty million, which includes A and E and project management costs, can be deducted from the one thirty-nine.
So then, so, so what's to be borrowed now then, Mr. Panglinen, is eighty-nine million dollars?
Well, yeah, that was just based on this information that we just got here right now.
Okay, and so, well, maybe further on, we'll figure out where that's going to be then.
Speaker, I believe the vice speaker has some... Speaker, I believe, is the Vice Speaker has some-
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I think, before we lose the, the panel, and since we're on this discussion, I have a proposed amendment, and I'm not, I'll ask legal counsel or the Chair to put it in the appropriate place, but this was to try to have a cap, and since we're now with this discussion, my proposed amendment was a $100 million cap. But if we're going to go with 89 or 80, then that can be amended. I just wanted us to memorialize it into the bill that there is a cap.
Can we, can we get a copy? Mail?
Did everybody get a copy? How could the Chair-
No, we don't have a copy up here.
We did, it's, it's the one that's kind of shaded out.
No, we don't have it.
It says authority limited. When I wrote the amendment, I, I put 100 million. I wasn't sure whether it was 139 or whatever, but I thought I would put a cap of 189, and I'm very glad that I've now fleshed it out with the discussion between DOE and GIDEA that 89 should be sufficient. So at the pleasure of the body, we set the cap at either 89 or 100. It's all hopeful, it's, all we're doing is kicking the can down the street, that's all.
Okay, we're, so we'll entertain the Vice Speaker's motion at this time?
So I, I, I moved that legal counsel put this in at the appropriate place. I, I don't want to blindside anybody, but I put in 100, 100 million, and also, there's, there's one line that I put down at the bottom. "The authority to enter financing agreements pursuant to this act shall be valid only after the Governor of Guam transmits to the Speaker of the Legislature, written certification that any payments made pursuant to the authority will not hinder the operation of government entities directly related to health, education, and public safety." So I'm, I'm being very transparent about the amendment that I'm proposing, one that I set a cap, and two, that I put a certification that he, we cannot move forward unless the Governor can certify to us that doing so will not hinder those three major operations of government. Okay? So that's, that's my amendment, wherever you want to put it. I think it probably should be added new, at the end, just before severability, but that's up to legal counsel.
Okay. On the Vice Speaker's amendment, Speaker Wampat and then Senator Guthers?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I'm glad that the, the Vice Speaker has this amendment, because that was the next thing I was going to, to ask, because although we were just dealing with DOE and what, or what's needed to repair, which is 89 million, further on, you would see that there is a provision for collateral equipment, and then further on, you're going to see that there is a request also to purchase buses, regular school buses and sped buses. So 89 million would, would never be able to, to address any one of those issues. So, you know, I thank, of course, the Vice Speaker for proffering this amendment, and I do support the amendment.
Thank you, Speaker Wampat. Senator Guthers?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I'm very pleased with the Vice Speaker's amendment. I think it's very reasonable and helpful, and I think it also provides a good guideline for GIDEA and for the executive branch and for DOE, in terms of how this is going to be executed, in terms of the ceiling amount to be procured, and in terms of the goal of not imperiling the well-being of, of the people of Guam in the critical service areas of this government in order to make this possible. So I think this is a very reasonable amendment, and I thank the Vice Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the Vice Speaker's amendment, are there any, Senator, Tom, Tom Etta?
Just a minor technical amendment. On the second to the last line, where it says that, with written certification that any payments made pursuant to that authority will not, and I think maybe more precisely that any payments to be made, which suggests that, he, the certification suggests that the Governor has identified where he's going to basically shift monies from, to be able to then carry out this authority within the spirit of this provision. Yeah, so it's just an amendment to add the words, "certification that any payments to be made pursuant to that authority will not hinder the operation."
Okay, on the amendment to the amendment, Senator Respechua? No objections? Motion. On the Speaker, Vice Speaker's amendment?
On the main amendment, if I can just get some feedback from the administration. So, so I think this is a reasonable amendment, and if the, the Governor provides written certification that any payments to be made pursuant to this authority won't affect these three critical areas, but do you foresee the Governor providing a written certification of what's going to happen 30 years down the road? Because that's the way I read this amendment, is, or would it be enough for the mover of this amendment, for the Governor to provide the certification under, under his term?
You know, Senator, I, I can't speak to what the Governor, I, I mean, just, just because I'm just reading this now, I can't speak to what he would say with this specific amendment. I, I don't think there's an intent to take away from those critical areas, but I would have to defer and at least, you know, have, have some time to, to get his thoughts on that first, before I would comment. I, I don't see necessarily a problem with it, but yet, to say we're, we're looking at something 30 years in advance, I, I can't comment.
Or just a matter of discussion. Would the mover of the amendment be satisfied if the Governor will be able to, to do, at least he provides a 10-year forecast? I mean, every administration does that. Would it be, would it be prudent to make that certification pursuant to a 10-year forecast, revenue forecast, or pursuant to something? I just don't want him to come back and say, "He wanted to do it, but it's a poison pill."
I understand.
I, I made the suggestion, this amendment, because I was concerned about reading the transcript of the hearing where DOE, GDOE was going to have to pay for, for this, and I wanted to make sure that entering into this was not going to place DOE in the position where they wouldn't be able to make two payrolls, or whatever. So I, I took the three critical areas, public safety, I didn't want the, the payments to come out of public safety, I didn't want it to come out of health, and I didn't want, I wanted to make sure that it, it didn't impede the operation of, of DOE. It seemed to me that those are the three, the trilogy that all of us can agree on, you know? Maybe some of us might have culture as a, a third, or, but, but it's not. It, the trilogy is health, education, and, and public safety. And so those were the only three that I wanted to make sure that he can say, that entering into these agreements will not impede or hinder the operation of those three areas. And if he can't, that's fine. I, I, I don't believe in their forecast anyway, so I just want him to sign that he's going to, that it's not going to impede, and so just, but I just wanted to make sure that, that he can, he can sign and say, "This is not going to, to cause closure at DOE or closure at GPD, or public health to, to turn away more mothers so that they're arrested for stealing and for mallet cost less."
Okay. On the amendment, are there any objections? No objections? Motion passes. We're still on section one. Speaker, did you have an amendment?
Yes, and the primary author was calling out for it, and I, but I just couldn't find the amendment here, but it's on line 15, after lease obligations, because he was talking about some options here, where it says an "and/or" to leverage revenue bonds and/or certificates of participation in lease obligations. And, and I wanted to, to put another option in which is out-of-the-box type of thinking, where it really would not impact at all on the govern, on, on raising the debt ceiling, or, well, though it's been raised to 100%, but not raising it to 110, or that there will not be, that we didn't, no one will have to come back to this legislature to increase taxes. And the third, of course, is that it would not negatively impact on, on the operations of the government, and what I wanted to put was the language that, you know, "and/or" that the Government of Guam provides, because what it is, is to provide financial information of the Government of Guam, so the contractor can look within the Government of Guam's financial resources to identify within its proposal the best lease payment structure to provide financial support. And, and this is actually the same language that, or the same concept in which GPA is actually trying to work with DOEs, that when they identify means to save DOE from having to pay so much more with power and, and sewage, that whatever those savings are, and they go in and do the work to retrofit, then what it is, is that those savings then becomes the payment source to GPA. What this language then, and that other alternative, is that it would allow the government as well to do the same. So there is that potential, that of course, with a wide variety of options, other than what the government is just used to. We're just used to going out and borrowing money, we're used to just giving tax credits, we're used to just doing leaseback and all that, and it's always the same traditional way of paying back our debts. And so what I'm saying is that when you open up the books, and these are books anyway that are public domain, not anything that's confidential, I suppose, or classified, is that it, then they, by doing that, they would be able to determine how then they can save the government money. And by saving the government the money, it's not, it's not appropriating above that, it's what actually is being appropriated, and that's what's being used, you know, as a debt service. So, and that's why I wanted to provide that language, but I've been looking for my amendment, and because everything just happened so fast, and it's changed, and that, and now I'm having to, you know, come back. And then, of course, where it says, "to provide for financing," I'm sorry? Well, I, I can do it, but I wanted to at least share it with you right now, then I can go ahead and have it typed out, and I wanted to say, "in addition to meeting," of course, and this is something I know that we had discussed earlier, that at least in another meeting, but it was thrown out, but where it says, "in addition to meeting the challenges of the limited funding arrangement with the contractor or developer, must adhere to simple financial principles. First, that the arrangement not run afoul the Government of Guam's debt ceiling; two, that the arrangement does not raise taxes or fees, or create new taxes or fees; and third, that the financial impact on the Government of Guam is minimal." And, you know, and that language, of course, falls with that option, it's not for everything, it's for this particular alternative, so.
Okay, so that's your first amendment?
That's the whole amendment, but I need to get the language to you.
Speaker, on that amendment that you just read, I'll recognize Senator Guthers and then the Vice Speaker.
Yeah, Ms. Speaker, I, I just, I'm kind of confused by some of it, because I think, I think the previous speaker was talking about getting savings from DOE to actually pay for the, let's say, the GPA initiative on energy conservation. And in the same principle, in this bill, we're, in listening to GIDEA and Henry, they also, in the former, a former hearing, and also today, basically, this committee talked about savings in DOE to help pay for some of the costs associated with improving our schools. So I think that's quite consistent with what we've been suggesting, and I want to emphasize that, and I know we have the Acting Superintendent here, that, you know, even though it sounds like DOE needs more money for different things, I know that DOE is working with the executive branch in various task force groups to see how it can identify funds and save monies to help reduce non-essential costs. Am I correct, Madam Superintendent? Can you give us sort of an idea of some of the things that you've been able to identify that might help reduce costs within the department, that might be able to help pay for some of the improvements in the fiscal structures of our schools?
Well, specific to what, Madam Speaker spoke about, one of the discussions we've been having with GPA, for instance, is to look at financing of doors and windows, LED lights, air conditioning, things that would reduce the energy costs of the department, and use the savings in power to, to finance the purchase of those, those upgrades. So, you know, the, I think that, that's some of the things that we've been talking about.
And I think if you look at the later part of this bill, as presented by the committee, there are some initiatives included in there regarding energy conservation and methodologies to help achieve that goal. So what I'm trying to say is I support the recommendation of the Speaker in terms of ensuring our schools, particularly when they are rebuilt or built or renovated, has that kind of component as part of this philosophy, that we want to make sure we take advantage of the latest technologies to reduce costs for energy, and to maximize the potential for savings that could help pay for the costs of retrofitting the schools, either in terms of structural improvements and/or energy resource costs to retrofit the school. So I think we're very consistent there, and I'm glad it was brought up. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Guthers. On the Speaker's amendment, Vice Speaker Cruz?
Mr. Chairman, I support the Speaker's amendment, and with our due respect, Madam Superintendent, I just had a meeting with GPA this, this afternoon, and I, I understand that, that there was discussion with GPA about trying to work out something with, with the company, and I, if I was to share with, with colleagues what I saw this afternoon, they would have a fit, because the per student power bill is so drastically different between schools, some of them are 400, 500% more than others. It's, the disparity is unbelievable. One school was as high as $875 a year per student, and, and another one was down at 165. So there was discussion. As I understand it, Madam, Madam Superintendent, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the information I received was that GDOE terminated discussions with this company that was willing to go in and redo the entire school system, finance it themselves, and from the savings that you would have received at GDOE from your power and your water, paid, paid themselves back for their investment in your school system within a two-year period. And I, I could not believe that, when I was informed, that GDOE terminated discussions with this company. Am I wrong, or the information I received was incorrect?
Um, it, I'm not aware of the fact that we've terminated any discussions. We've had meetings as late as a month ago, I think.
I, I think the, that maybe their impression is wrong. Their impression was that the, the discussions were going- Their impression was that the discussions were going along well, and then the discussion stopped.
Right.
I'm not sure whether or not it was because of the discussion of this bill and the ARA funds and whatever, but I was informed not more than five hours ago that the discussions had stopped with this private corporation that was willing to completely redo the system, pay for it, and pay themselves back from your savings.
Well, right. And so my concern with that, with those initial discussions, was that any financing would, in my mind, require legislation. I don't think that I could sign, it sounded to me like what they wanted to do was a special revenue bond, for instance. So we, I had asked legal counsel to take a look and see, you know, what we needed to do to make it happen. And then subsequent to that, they came to talk to us about the possibility of using ARA monies. So certainly, we're open to continuing discussions with them. You know, part of what I have to do on a day-to-day basis is, you know, determine which priorities I need to work on first. We started talking about this and didn't want to make any commitments, not knowing exactly, you know, where this bill was going to end up.
So, Mr. Chairman, I think then that confirms the need for this amendment being proffered by the speaker, to give GDOE the authority, or GIDEA the authority, to enter into these discussions and these negotiations, to be creative and find other ways to repay them, make the payments. So I support the Speaker's amendment.
Thank you, Vice Speaker. Are there any discussions, any other? If not, Speaker, you want to close on your amendment? If not, any objections? No objections, motion passes. Any other comments on Section 1? Vice Speaker Cruz?
I'm still trying to figure out, is the panel going to stay for the entire discussion? Because if not, I want to ask another very broad question. Have they had a chance to review the language in this proposed bill? And does it conform with the strictures of the two indentures, two bonds that you guys have recently signed? I'm just wondering whether the language is clear enough, or do we need to have special language to make sure that we don't violate the bond indenture that we've gotten into in the last six or seven months?
Go ahead, yeah.
Is different, is a little different than what's in here. And so we wondered why bond counsel changed, we haven't had a chance to talk to them about this, why they changed the language a little bit. That was a question that we had that has not yet been answered for us.
And that's why I'm proffering it while you're here, because I think it's imperative, before we send this bill to the floor, that we get the correct language that doesn't make this whole discussion fruitless, because it'll go forward and have to be vetoed because it's in violation of the indentures. So who has the language that is necessary to make sure that moving forward with this proposal, we don't
That was included in.
...violate the bonds?
Yes, very good question, Vice Speaker. In the markup meetings, we had originally asked bond counsel to review and comment on the original bill. They provided some feedback, number one, to, that it was their opinion that approving a lease revenue bond or a non-appropriation lease, number one, would not count against the debt ceiling, which was our first hurdle. Secondly, with regard to the two BPT issues, there was language that Stan had, I had offered up, saying that the pledge or the reservation of the 3 percent BPT would be a subordinate to the existing pledge, and as long as that language is.
I remember reading that email, and it's not in this bill. Is it? What I'm trying to get at, Mr. Pangolino, is that the bill, as currently stated, does not have the language that was suggested by bond counsel.
I believe on page four, Mr. Vice Speaker, page four, item B.
That does read that it is subordinate to the bond indenture. I realize that it says that it's not to violate any, or breach any existing bond covenant, but what I'm trying to get at is the specific language that was suggested by your bond counsel to include in here so that we don't have a problem. If you think it's clear enough, then fine. I'm not going to fight you on it, and we'll let it go through. I'm just, I'm being as transparent and trying to be as.
No, I understand, but with all the different versions, I mean, I do have the comments. We just need to match up the comments to the specific portion on the bill.
I understand. And all I'm trying to point out to you is, please, look at this newest, whatever, second, third, fourth, seventh iteration of this bill. Get us the language that is necessary so that when we send this up, it's not going to be sent back to us because the language is incorrect.
We will certainly have that done.
Senator Duñez?
So are we still going to go section by section so that we can get the pertinent questions to the panel?
Well, what's the pleasure of the body? We'd like to have them here, and then you can ask your questions, if you want them here, while we go section by section.
Well, that's, because I mean, you just, you had ruled, right, that we're going to go ahead and do amendments as we rise if they're not pertinent to you.
Yes.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
I think it's been past practice that we have the panel here and that we engage with them directly and ask any questions we may have on this bill relative to the entire bill, not necessarily in a section by section manner, and so that after the panel is dismissed, then we can continue to go section by section. But they really don't need to be here and see us, you know.
Move the amendments, right?
The formal process of moving the amendments and paying attention to discussion, but I'd like to take advantage of their time while they're here, and I'd like to suggest it, ask them direct questions relative to the bill.
So we'll go on that, yes.
Okay, fine. So with Section 1, then I just wanted to make a comment to telling it appears, then with this amendment, should it pass in its form, that Speaker Wampat just proffered, then you would be able to engage. This would be the legislation and the vehicle whereby you can engage in the demand side management considerations with GPA. Just wanted that on the record. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Duñez. Are there any, Senator Guthers?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to say, I really think the panel is very important with respect to this bill, because I don't want to see us put anything in this bill that will make it impossible for the intent of this bill to be realized. And the only way we can do that is as we go through it, we inquire if this amendment's going to make it difficult to make possible, or will it facilitate it, or is there better language to use? If we dismiss the panel too early, then I'm afraid we may end up with some problems later on. So I'd much rather have the panel here as we go through the bill, each section, so that we are insured that the language is workable, so that the intent of this bill can be met. Thank you.
Senator, Mr. Speaker?
Again, Mr. Chairman, in that setup, you set it up where the panel begins to engage with the legislature in the debate, and I don't think that's why the panel is here. The panel is here to guide us, so we ask them questions relative to the bill. If any member has an amendment, they can offer that amendment for discussion, but I think the amendments, I mean, they can be taken care of right now as we go along. That's fine, as we've done already. But as we get closer to the meat of the bill, I think you're going to see a totally different dynamic, and I hope there's still decorum, but you'll see a different dynamic and exchange of views. And I don't think having the panel here will be prudent or to help us in that regard. So I, in deference to what the previous speaker said, if she has any amendments, she should be asking any questions. And if, in the event the panel is dismissed and there's an amendment that the sponsor of the bill may have a question as to whether it would help or hinder, then I'm sure the panel is always accessible, so we can have follow-up questions. But I think the less, the less we have them in here, the better for us, as it's always been a past practice, because they're very busy individuals as well. And so we want to maximize the limited time that we have with them. That was just my recommendation.
Okay, thank you. So what we'll do, we'll just move on, and I'll use my discretion, we know when, if and when it does get to that point. So we're still on Section 1. Is there any other questions or amendments that the body has for the panel? If, Vice Speaker, did you have a, can I get my copy? No, my.
I do have an amendment that will need the assistance of the AG and the, and I distributed it. Yesterday, we spent considerable time in this legislature insisting that we figure out a way that we assist local training companies and individuals, and insisting that before anything is done, that we assure that all local training companies are given first option at employment. Mr. Chairman, we are currently at about a 14, maybe 15 percent unemployment rate on this island, and my amendment is to include a policy in favor of local workers. It's not, it's not that, it isn't revolutionary, and I'm glad GIDEA's here, because as I understand it, in the GIDEA QC's, there is a requirement that 75 percent of the workforce of the QC company be local, if my recollection is correct. Incorrect, please correct me, Mr. Pangolino.
U.S. citizen.
U.S. citizen.
U.S. citizen.
And so I, the amendment that I'm proffering, and it can be numbered by legal counsel and placed anywhere, is a policy in favor of the local workers. Contractors or developers wishing to participate in this project must include terms, conditions, and procedures requiring that the contractor by himself and through his affiliates shall at all time employ and maintain a construction workforce of which all are U.S. citizens or permanent residents of the United States during the different phases of construction, rehabilitation, improvement, expansion, or alteration of educational facilities pursuant to this act. And I'm hoping I'm not going to get any opposition from my colleagues on this. One, that the ARA funds that were originally being used was to make sure that we got employment. Unfortunately, we didn't do it in time to try to, we, there's a requirement for local, I mean, for U.S.-made building material, the GIDEA QC's already provide for this. The contractors that are here that want to bid on this can and should hire unemployed. I call the attention of the panel to a recent news article on May the 19th that said that the jobs are scarce, workers are waiting, locals make up 70 percent of the construction employment. So I'm just trying to figure out a way that we can, in using this $100 million, make sure that our people are the ones that are employed, the permanent residents that are here and the U.S. citizens that are here in construction that are sitting waiting. And you can all refer back to, you know, your news article on that, that there's people that are being, that are left out there. And if we're going to give them contracts under this proposed law, then I want to make sure that they do everything they can to employ local.
Vice Speaker, did you have a question for?
Well, not so much a question, I just wanted to hear in the event. In the event that there was any question as to the constitutionality of this, or the fact that it was revolutionary, and I'm glad that Carl's here, because there is a requirement in the QC that's pretty close to this. The difference is, is that I take my, my proposal is that I didn't put a 75 percent cap on it.
Right. You put all.
All.
Right.
And I purposely did that. I will let somebody else who doesn't want to employ local make the amendment, take it down to 75 percent. So whichever one of you wants to keep unemployed tomorrow, you can take it down to 75 percent, but I'm going to keep it at 100.
My only concern with that, and, Mr. Chairman, if there was a specialized, if there was some sort of specialized requirement or specialized, you know, employee that was needed for whatever job, it was just the all, and I don't know if you wanted it to mirror the QC, which I believe is 90 percent, and it differs contract by contract, but for the most part, I've seen that 90 percent number of U.S. citizen or permanent resident.
Carl, I'd be more willing, you know, I would be amenable to 90 percent. All I'm concerned about is that
Absolutely.
The gentleman in this article is a high-technician, air-condition person. He was working on the naval hospital project, and he was terminated. And I know from the company that he was terminated from, that it, the job went to an H2 worker. And I won't say on the air what I said to that person. But I want to make sure that if we're going to, if we're going to commit ourselves to $100 million worth of construction, plus another $60 million of ARA funds in construction, I want to make sure that the 15 percent of unemployed locals are going to be the first ones that get a job. And the one, the high-technical ones, that, this was not a day laborer that was, that's in this article.
Trust me, Vice Speaker, I completely support that. I'm just thinking for.
I understand. This is my amendment. Whoever wants to amend it can amend it and work with it. I'm just saying, I want it on the record that I want to make sure that we employ our people.
Thank you, Vice Speaker. Senator Tomada?
Maybe if the Attorney General can clarify. We're putting here that the construction workers' workforce must be comprised of United States citizens, permanent, and when we say permanent residents, I guess those are like your green card holders. But now, do the Micronesian workers that come in, do they fall in either of those two categories? Are they either permanent residents, they're not U.S. citizens?
Yes, I think they, if they live here, then they become permanent residents, yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
I mean, if they move here, and this is their residence, then this is their residence during however long they're working.
All right, so they fall into the category.
Under the covenant, I think they could be employed because they can reside on Guam.
Okay, I just want to make sure that they would be covered then under the permanent resident category.
Yes.
Thank you, Senator Ada. Senator Guthers?
I have an inquiry also. I support the initiative here, but are we referring to individuals that meet I support the initiative here, but are we referring to individuals that meet, you know, the skills that are required for construction work, like master electricians, master plumbers, et cetera? And if so, do we have sufficient numbers of those people here that meet those construction job skill requirements that are available? I don't know. I'd like to know.
I will yield to that question if that was requested. Yes, we have sufficient people for it. We have, unfortunately, as a government, because of the ill-reasoned lifting of the cap of H2 workers, been misusing the H2 program to the detriment of our people. We have hundreds of people who should be working at the shipyard who aren't, because there are hundreds that are being brought in. In this article, the Naval Hospital one, I've written to Madeline now, and I want to have the listing of everybody that has a subcontract or contract with the federal government to look and see what positions they have H2 people in, and whether or not we have a local person that could fill that position. Because this article has a highly trained gentleman that's been working in the field for almost 30 years. Not as a laborer, but as an air conditioning mechanic. And it's criminal that he's unemployed.
Thank you. Senator Atta, we'll just...
I think, I just need to pose that, my question, one more time about the Micronesian citizens that come to Guam, and whether they're covered under this category of permanent residents, because I would just advise that to be a, if it falls in the category of permanent resident, one must be then going through the process of getting a U.S. citizenship.
For example, green card holders are, they're not going through the process. You're saying that they're not permanent residents, and they're not citizens, so they're excluded?
The Micronesians?
And I think we could not, I don't think, well, I'm saying this off the top of my head, but I don't think we can exclude those under the treaty the United States has with FSM.
Okay, I guess I'm just, I raise the question simply because a large number of the workers out there are coming from Micronesia.
Yes.
And if by, if then this amendment goes through that says you either got to be a U.S. citizen or a permanent resident, however that is legally defined, which may not then include our neighbors, people migrating over from Micronesia, then that kind of opens up a different set of problems.
Vice Speaker?
To address that concern, I would have no problem with adding after United States or compact reassociation resident. What, I'll ask, the legal counsel can determine whether it's COFA or FAS, either one, let's include them.
Okay, on the amendment to the amendment? No objections? Motion passes. We're still on the amendment, recognize Senator Taran? I'm sorry about that earlier.
No problem. Just for the record, I do want to state that I'm always in support of hiring locals first. It's always a priority that we put them in the front when we ever have, when we have positions available, especially to improve our economy and improve our school system. I do have a question, though. Would this amendment be better suited for Section 10, where it discusses contractual safeguards?
Yeah, we'll leave it to legal counsel to place it where it's appropriate.
Yes, and there's also a line in there, Number 11, under the contractual safeguards, on Line 16, where it discusses the salaries and prevailing wages that deal with temporary alien workers. So that would probably have to be stricken if this amendment goes through.
Where, what page are you on?
On Page 10.
Line, I'm sorry, Senator?
Line 16 and 17, Number 11.
Okay, so we'll entertain this, and we'll come back to you if you'd like to remove that from the bill.
Okay, thank you.
On the Vice Speaker's amendment, there's no objections, motion carries, Senator Taran? Your amendment to remove it? Well, we'll just do it since we're on it now. We'll go ahead and... Vice Speaker Cruz, yes, I just did.
Then I'll do it. Since we passed my amendment, then I also make the amendment on Page 10. Number 11 be stricken.
On the amendment, no objections, motion carries. Okay, we're still on Section 2. Is there any questions? Yes. Or, yes, Vice Speaker Cruz, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Chairman, I want to commend you for your addition of contractual safeguards. I think Ms. Titano was present when I jumped all over the JFK administrators and the management for moving into JFK before they walked through their punch list, and we're left hanging at this point, a year out. So I have an amendment that I passed out. It's a two-part amendment. One, in Section 2, it adds a new definition, I...
We don't have a copy here? If we can get a copy, please?
I think it should have been distributed. I think it was the First Amendment that I, that was passed out, but we, since we weren't going to page, I passed it out. It's marked, "A new item 13 is added to Section 12 contractual safeguards."
No, we don't have that.
But, no, this was working, I was working with the wrong version of the bill, so legal counsel's going to have to renumber it appropriately. I added a new definition, "Acceptance tests and procedures shall mean the testing and the procedures that the parties are to an agreement," I mean, that the parties to an agreement use to determine whether a product or service meets the requirements of the agreement. This is, this is for the punch list.
Vice Speaker, can I take a short recess? There's a concern here. We'll take a short recess.
Well...
On the previous amendment, yeah. If you could just...
Okay. Oh, can I do, oh, sorry. I don't think you want to take all love enough. I think you just want to take out the part with H2 worker you want.
was too hasty. And so hopefully, I ask for reconsideration of the last amendment, and 11, we should only strike Line 17.
Okay, first, we want to ask, is there objections to reconsider the motion? No objections, okay. Vice Speaker?
So the, my amended amendment is just to leave in Line 16 and strike Line 17. Compliance, it should be compliance with Guam prevailing wage rates for employment, period.
And Lines 17 is deleted?
Right.
Okay. On the amendment, no objections, carries. On your new amendment?
On my new amendment, we would add a new, well, no. For Section 2, I'd add a new amendment definition. It would be H, I guess, rather than I. But counsel will know the numbering. Acceptance tests and procedures shall mean the testing and procedures that the parties to an agreement use to determine whether a product or service meets the requirements of the agreement. I'd like to... What I'm hoping for with this one is that we don't have the same fiasco that we had at JFK, where we moved in and we didn't go through the punch list, there was no procedure that requires it. And again, Mr. Chairman, I commend you for putting in the 11 to 12 of the contractual safeguards, but this is the only one that I think, that with all due respect, I think we overlooked. I want to make sure that they have a punch list, and nobody accepts anything and signs off until everything that the agreement says they're supposed to do is done, and none of this mañana, we'll do it tomorrow, and we'll get our parking lot in a year, and our gym in two. Okay.
On the Vice Speaker's amendment?
Yeah, on Section 2, it's to add the definition, and then if that's, if that's approved, then to add a 13 on your contractual safeguards on Page 10. It is letter I, because it's, no, it should be, it should read H, under your bill. It should read H.
Okay, on those two amendments?
Any objection?
Are there any objections? No objections? Speaker Wampad, you recognize?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I have a question here, in why, under a wardy, that it says shall mean one party? Page 2, the bottom, Line 23.
Who's your question for, Speaker?
GITA, I guess, would be, unless they can't answer it. Why do we have one party here for an awardee? Yes, Section 2, on definitions, Page 2, Line 23.
We'll take a short recess. Okay, the committee, the hold's back on. Speaker Wampad had a question on Section 2, on the awardee, and so we'll ask, I know that Senator Guthers, the author, would like to speak on it, and then we'll also have Henry speak on it as well. Senator?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, colleagues. You know, in drafting the bill, the thought was that, first, we observed, we have observed so many bid protests at DOE, and also in other institutions of government, that have really prolonged... prolonged needed infrastructure improvements, school contracts for services or improvements. And part of the thinking was to avoid that, to hold a single entity accountable for the execution of the intent of this bill. And if you look, if you look at the bill, it authorizes, in the committee's version, it authorizes the awardee to work with other entities to be able to fulfill the terms of the contract of agreement, meaning that the contractor can have subcontractors and work with other entities to help ensure that the requirements of the bill, once law and once a contract is entered into between the government through GITA and the Department of Education and the awardee, is fulfilled. We have seen numerous disappointments in the way infrastructure projects have been handled in the past, and I have to say it, DOE, I have some familiarity with that, having served on the board for many years, and seen how monies have been, in many ways, wasted on contractors that have not been entirely honest with the department, have used inferior materials, inferior work, been able to somehow prolong their engagements by not warranting their work, or having to come back to fix something that it should have worked right from the beginning. And we really don't want to see this again. So that was the intent behind this initiative, to have one entity accountable to the government and to the people of Guam for the work involved in rehabilitating our schools. And there are many large companies here, many large construction companies that have the capability of doing this, that can get the financing, that can get the bonding, that have very high performance ratings, to be able to execute a massive improvement, infrastructure improvement project, such as what is intended by this bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Guthers. Mr. Taitino, would you also want to shed some light on it?
Yeah, I think, really, a lot of those points were right on the mark, and in addition to that, there's a financing component that has to go into it as well. I think in order to get financing, you would, you would need at least one awardee to pursue that. So a lot of it has to do with the financial capabilities, but also to avoid potential issues that have arisen before.
Speaker Wampat?
Thank you very much. You know, we're wanting to make sure that there are many different alternatives, of course, that will be made available to the government, and there's always the possibility then that what if, of course, that there may be another, you know, developer contractor that would have another deal that's equally, you know, feasible, of course, to accept, but because we're limiting ourselves to one, then you won't be able to implement the other. Like, for example, if it involves, you know, like in this case, let's say with GPA, who's able then, and they specialize in power, and they are going to be able to identify the savings, we can't go with them now because we're going to go with this other awardee who would say he'll do everything, you know, weatherization of the windows, panels that they may put up, you know, changing the light bulbs, all that. I mean, so I think we're just limiting ourselves, like I say earlier, to one, and that's why I had asked the question, because I think with some of these, you know, other alternatives that are going to be made available, and it still does not limit, of course, I realize, is that when a decision is to be finally made overall, is that it could be one or more, not necessarily just one. And that's why I had, you know, wanted to ask the question, because I wanted to also then proffer that amendment to make it one or more parties. And it does not, it doesn't say that you're limited to one, but it doesn't say you're also limited to two or three or four, or whatever it is. It just gives you that flexibility when you look at it and you look at all the proposals that you would select, one or more, or maybe just one. But this does not bind you, of course, you know, to having to go out and, just because the language is there, because it's definitely one is there. So, and so that's the amendment that I like to proffer then, is one or more parties.
Okay, on the amendment, Speaker Wampat's amendment to line 23, page 2, to amend it from one party, the definition of awardee to one or more. There's been an objection, so we'll call for the vote.
Can we explain what the objection is first?
Okay, please, yes. Senator?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, you know, first of all, the Department, we don't want the Department of Education having to run after however many different contractors is going to be needed to undertake $100 million worth of construction and renovation. And I think it really is, would be best for DOE to develop as comprehensive a request for proposal as possible, identifying everything that needs to be neat, to be done, and let a contractor then form a consortium of construction companies or whatever, and let that one entity, or however many consortiums are going to be formed, and let them put in a bid. That company then, will then be responsible for turning around and competitively bidding within the scope of his contract to the different subcontractors who will do the various projects. The, I think that the difficulty in, you know, awarding contracts to numerous is then you run into the problem of if contractor C, his work might be, might, if he doesn't, you know, go on schedule, may then hamper the work of contractor B, and it's just a whole host of things that DOE is going to have to deal with. So I really recommend that we just put out an RFP for one contractor. That does not preclude, you know, five different bidders, or however many consortiums, or maybe you got one big, you know, black construction company that can do $100 million worth of projects, however they do it, but I really, well, I object to having to then put DOE in a situation where it has to deal with many different contractors.
Okay, thank you. On the speaker's amendment, motion? There's been objection? You want to talk?
I just wanted to acknowledge the comments of the previous speaker. He has an engineering background, and actually what he said was, was part of why the awardee language was included here. And although I do appreciate the speaker's idea, I think the consortium option is a good one, too, in that this does not preclude that. This language would not preclude a consortium of entities to work together and submit a single proposal in response to GITA solicitations. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to acknowledge the presentation of the previous speaker. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Speaker Cruz?
Mr. Chairman, in my discussion this afternoon about the one contractor that was willing to come in to, to address the edu, the power and water situation at GPA, I mean, at GDOE, I'm not sure they'd be part of any consortium. I mean, they are a huge company that could probably own most of the companies on this island. And so, at least my review of them on, on the internet, they're a huge international corporation. I'm not sure they would want to be somebody's subcontractor, but they need to address the issue of the power bill and the water bill at GDOE, because if you saw, if I shared it with you, and I will be sharing it with all of you, you will, you will see the importance of addressing that issue. And I wouldn't want to preclude them from addressing that if they didn't want to join the construction parts of this thing, but to deal with other things. So I, I support the speaker's amendment.
Thank you, Vice Speaker. On the speaker's amendment, all those in favor of changing it to more than one party, the definition of awardee? Speaker? On the, on the Speaker Wampat's amendment? Motion fails. Okay, I will move on. Senator Tom Etta?
Since we're talking about one awardee to undertake these construction projects, I noticed in going through here that there is no provision in here about the hiring of a construction manager. So who's going to develop the request, unless that's already been done by Sodexo, but who's going to put together that RFP package? Who's going to put together, then, when the bid goes out and it comes back in, who's going to evaluate the different proposals? And then, once it's been awarded and construction has commenced, who is going to be keeping track to make sure that that awardee is in fact doing what he said he would do? Certainly not the maintenance division of DOE. No, and I say that in seriousness, because they will already have their plates full in trying to sustain the maintenance of the existing facilities. So to try and put together, you know, put on top of them another $100 million worth of, you know, construction management and all, it just, it, it won't do it. So I'm not quite sure where we would have to put in here. Maybe it should go somewhere where, I don't know, I would have to take a look to see where we would put in provisions that in this $100 million, it would include the, so that would be the second awardee, a contractor to do the work, and a construction manager to make sure the work is done.
Senator, Carl, you want to answer? Senator Etta, on your first question, we'll have Mr.?
Yeah, your first question was, would be, who would procure the construction manager?
I don't see anything in this bill. It only, this bill only provides...
If there was a construction manager, who would procure it?
I don't see anything in here.
Okay.
But, but if you agree that we're going to need that, that expertise?
Right.
Then we need to put provisions that that's going to be an allowable cost.
Vice Speaker?
Unless I'm mistaken, hasn't GDOE already hired Sodexo as your construction project manager to oversee all your constructions? I mean, they may have also gotten the food contract, but you originally hired them to do, to figure out what you were going to do about your, your buildings was the first reason you hired them, right?
Right. So they're, they're on contract to manage any construction we have for the duration of their contract, so as long as we have dollars to fund them, I believe we can, we have some extensions built into their contract. I think the way the GPA relationship works is they have two major contractors, and that contractor goes in, does an audit, prepares the design, and finds a construction company to do the work. But there are, I believe there are engineers that work for GPA that oversee the work that is conducted by, by the contractors. So, but, but Vice Speaker is correct right now. What happens is we have Sodexo access our project manager, and then we have a design firm, COVAL, that also helps us with the designs.
But the, but the question would be then, if Sodexo is already identified to be that project manager, question is, is would their, that cost of that project management activity be eligible for funding under this $100 million? And it doesn't, from just quick reading of this, doesn't seem that that would be the case. Otherwise, they have no funding source?
Right.
For that activity. So I think we just need to take a look to see where to put in that, something that would allow, that would make the cost of project management be an eligible cost item.
Mr. Chair? Senator Tony Etta?
When does Sodexo's contract expire?
I believe it expires at the end of this fiscal year, and then we're taking a look at the funds that are available. There are some provisions to extend.
And how long is that extension? Is that a yearly extension?
Yeah, the hope is for them to stay on board until we complete all of the era projects.
So then we won't have to be looking for another project management team, would we?
Well, it depends on, I mean, $100 million is a lot of money to try to spend all at one time, so we'd have to, you know, the developer would have to figure out the ti, that timing. So whether that will be able to be done in one year, 18 months, two years, I'm not sure.
Okay, thank you.
And generally, we would also probably try to do the heavy lifting around the summer months.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Senator Etta. Senator Speaker?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Superintendent Taitino, you said that you already have on board a project manager. Who is the project manager that oversaw the construction of John O'Keeffe High School?
The JFK project was administered by DPW.
Okay, so this current project manager was not involved in the...
No.
Okay, okay. Because we don't want to replicate the JFK model in any way, and so it's good news to
Okay, are there any other? Speaker Wampat?
I have a question, and I want to move, maybe for possible deletion, is on page 3, line 3, the words, when he says an awardee may cooperate with its affiliate, affiliates or another entity or entities in any manner of the awardee deems appropriate, and those words, those are the words that I would like to move to delete, in any manner the awardee deems appropriate. Page 3, line 3.
Okay, on Speaker Wampat's amendment?
And, and I mean, there's just something about this in any manner, it's just so very unclear. I mean, it can be just like, anything goes, and it's just, you know, for something that we're talking about, $100 million, specific projects, but then they're going to be able to cooperate with other entities in any manner, there's absolutely no restrictions whatsoever, no guidelines, no parameters, you know? So it's just open-ended, and that's the reason why, just to, to be on the safe side, I just feel that, that language should be, those words should be deleted.
Okay. On the amendment, no objections? Senator Etta, there's an objection?
I, I think that, that sentence, basically, that provision just, just makes it clear that that single awardee can in fact then, I guess in essence, another way to translate that is that that awardee may then go out and get subcontractors to do work. So he may hire a, he may, as it puts here, may cooperate with an affiliate to put in windows. It may cooperate with an affiliate to put in cement work. So that's, that's really all it's saying, but to take it away, I think, does more harm than to just leave it in there. to just leave it in there.
What I, what I, okay, let me explain maybe even further is that when an RFP goes out, there are terms and conditions in an RFP that, of course, would be issued by GITA. And in anything, just like what these bonds are about, there are terms and conditions. So, the phrase itself that I'm concerned about is that it's so ambiguous, and I like the Attorney General's Office in legal terms. When you use that kind of language, how, I mean, is it ambiguous at all or not? And, I mean, I don't object to what the previous speaker is saying, when you want to go and award somebody else, but, and that's fine, and they'll still be able to do that, but it's just the ambiguity where it says in any manner, those are the words that just, to me, is just too iffy, too many things that could happen that legally we would not like to see happen, and I just want to clean up that language.
Okay, thank you. On the amendment, all those in favor? I'm sorry, did you want to? Okay.
I could make a comment. We believe that's ambiguous also. And really, when it comes to an awardee and its, you know, associates, affiliates, subcontractors, that's something that, that shouldn't be, we don't believe, we think it makes it ambiguous to put something in there that looks like it gives the awardee some extra authority that's kind of unknown, and so we see no reason why that language would be in there. And we do believe it, it does kind of add an ambiguity of what does that really mean?
Okay, thank you. On the amendment, all those in favor, Speaker Juan Pat's amendment? Motion fails. Fails seven.
If I, I was going to make an amendment to address the concern, what if we change the language to say, leave it at an awardee may cooperate with other subcontractors to provide, you know, would that help address? That maybe we can be a little more specific? Okay, never-
Yeah, we think, you know, what's in the RFP is in the RFP. Excuse me. What's in the RFP is what everybody has to follow, and we just think this does provide an ambiguity if you say they'll cooperate with, well, everybody's going to be negotiating and, you know, vying for getting a piece of the action or not. And so, we have trouble seeing the basis for that and really the meaning of it.
Senator Tom Ada?
Okay, well, I guess that that motion was disposed of already then, right? So, we're moving on?
Yes.
Okay. Earlier, I had-
Senator Ada? Okay, if we're moving on, I'm going to recognize Senator Duenis.
I'm sorry, okay.
Senator Duenis?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't know how long this is going to go, so I wanted to express this concern before we got there while the panel was here. This is directed specifically to the Attorney General's representative. On section five, I have a concern with this, and it appears as though this could, as we've been talking about, participation, this appears as though it could limit participation. As we all know, the bonds required to secure just any type of financing would, of course, be included with any final agreement. Do you think this could be problematic, putting this up front, to have to secure this type of bonding?
It would seem appropriate, if it's an RFP, to clarify that you're going to have a service bond posted, you know, by the proposal that's awarded in that manner. I think what they wanted to do is make sure that, you know, there's something backing up the contract that's awarded. And the way they do that is, you know, through searching and making the people that are proposers be responsible, and that's something that GITA can include in their RFP-
Okay.
-and have that, you know, background and make certain qualifications, especially something this large where they're going to be covering so much for so long. We were just, you know, we saw bid bond language in an RFP, and, you know, performance bond is what we normally see, yeah.
Right. And that, so that would be, I'm just wondering, with the variety of companies providing proposals and packaging and financing proposals, it seems like this would, this might reduce the pool of potential bidders if the way that they package their financing and the like is such that they would have the bonding if they won the award, but to have to put this, the way this reads, the proposer shall post a bid bond in the amount of $20 million at the time of the submission of its proposal. The awardee shall post a performance and payment bond for the construction portion of the amount of the full construction cost of the project. All bonds shall be executed by a surety company holding a certificate of authority from the Secretary of Treasury, Department Circular 570, in quotes. Do you think that they may limit the pool of participants?
You know, I'm not sure if we've gotten Bond Counsel's response to that, but, yeah.
Senator Guthers?
Yeah, I'll tell you. Remember, we went through a scenario with the company that did the John F. Kennedy High School. My understanding was, for a long, long time, they were trying to get bonding for the project. And that was part of the delay, aside from the protracted bid challenges, you know? There was a problem in getting the bonding for that project. So, the purpose of this language here was to ensure that those entities that respond to requests for this particular initiative have the ability to get the bonding required and the financing required to make it happen. That was the rationale for this.
Yeah, so I would only say then, in all fairness and response to that, that that's why you have the rating process, because any company that cannot get the bonding and back up their proposal would then just be disqualified, and you would go to the next responsible bidder.
But that, that didn't happen in the JFK case. The executive branch at that time just allowed it to go on and on and on and on and on. The project never started. They allowed them, it took almost a year for them to get bonding to meet the requirements of the contract after it was awarded, and that delayed the start of the JFK construction.
See, I think that was an error in ruling. I don't think that that should be allowed.
That was an accommodation from the last administration.
Discussion?
Ms. Chairman? Are you finished, Senator Duenis?
Yeah, I would, I would propose then that we at least bookmark this so that GITA can get back to us with Counsel's opinion on this, and, you know, I certainly respect the quandary that existed with regard to that project, and it's a good example, but I don't know that it really, if it really rises to the level of precluding bidders that could have, you know, responsible responses to the bid that give us the best value for our dollar because somebody mismanaged the JFK movement forward. I mean, it just seems unconscionable that any bidder that can't get bonding would hold the island hostage to constructing a facility because we have to wait for them to get bonding. To me, if they can't get bonding, they're not a responsible bidder anymore. And so, I'm just, I just proffer that question because I would hate to limit the pool of responsible bidders that could get us the best bang for our buck because we wanted to put this up front, which even that $20 million wouldn't guarantee the bonding of $100 million on any project. So, I would just respectfully ask to bookmark that and get an opinion from Bond Counsel.
Okay, Senator, thank you, Senator Duenis. You know, we're going to break.
Can I just finish on this thought, Ms. Chairman?
Okay. And then we'll ask GITA to provide that response, Senator Duenis, tomorrow morning.
Because I was, I was going to suggest that it's not a matter of Bond Counsel's interpretation, but it's what we want to hold for ourselves, the standard for this government. And I want to say that the comments of the previous speaker really speak to why section five exists, and based on what the author of this bill has said, Senator Guthers, in the JFK situation, the RFP was let out. I believe it was 70% financing and 30% construction. The company couldn't come up with the financing, and GITA had to join them in New York to secure the bond. And while the previous speaker said that it shouldn't have ended up the way it did, that's how it ended up. And so, if you're looking for this project of $100 million and you can't even get a bidder to put up a $20 million, a $20 million bid performance and payment bond, then they're not a serious bidder from the very beginning. And so, notwithstanding the concern that the senator made to have Bond Counsel give his opinion on this, I think it has more to do with what we want to establish for ourselves in our own safeguard. So, I'm also wondering, before we dismiss for the evening, based on what the Attorney General's Office said, do we then have to say GITA shall include this in the RFP?
No.
Because I agree with your comments, ma'am, that if we're providing this section, and if the section passes, would GITA look at this section and think on its own to include this in the RFP? Because you want to be very clear from the beginning that these are the requirements of the RFP, and you don't want to have someone take the time, spend the money, put all their proposals together to submit their proposal, only to be told after they submit the proposal, oh, by the way, you have to come up with a performance, a bid performance and payment bond. So, would it be prudent to add in a new sentence, GITA shall include this in the RFP, shall include this requirement in the RFP?
That would seem to be something in the legislature's prerogative to include, and if you did that, then there wouldn't be that lack of clarity that we had with it. You're creating something special by statute, and that would make sense as long as, you know, and that's what you're clarifying. Because they would still want, you'd still want them to, and as part of the RFP process, when they go out and do the construction part of it, you'd want to make sure all the subcontractors post appropriate bonds, too.
Okay, so, based on the discussion, Ms. Chairman, I move to add in a new sentence after line, on line 20, after 50, 570 close parentheses, period, it shall read, GITA shall include this requirement in the RFP, and then I'll prepare that in writing.
Okay. Any objections? No objections? Motion passes. On, okay, just for Senator Ada, and then we'll go break. We have the panel want to accommodate some of their appointments, but yes, Senator Ada.
On regarding section five on page six, I have no problem with the requirement that a bid bond be in the amount of $20 million be posted, although I think the standard normally is around 15%. So, in this case, I will lower that amount down to $15 million. And, but I think normally the bonds, like, will be, must be provided after the award is made, but, you know, as long as the bidder is aware that he's going to have to put up a bond, he doesn't have to go out and get it now, not knowing that he's going to get the contract. So, I would, I would make the amendment on line 16, that the proposer shall post a bid bond in the amount of, I'm going to change, I'm going to propose that we change that amount to $15 million, which is the standard, 15% of the bid amount, at the time of the award of its proposal.
Okay, thank you, Senator Ada. On your amendment, Speaker Juan Pat?
Thank you very much. Oh, Bond Counsel, what's the name, GITA guy left? What is the, I mean, Senator Ada said 15% seems to be the standard. Is that true then, as well as GITA, that when you go out and, you know, you award projects, what is the percentage that GITA does? Maybe, I don't know, and I'd like to know. I mean, construction work as well, individual contractors who go out there and do work?
You know, I don't have that, I don't have that specific answer right now. I think I'll have to check back with the team at GITA on that specific percentage amount, but we do have a division there that is working on a bunch of other CIP projects, and I could probably get that information from them. But I, you know, what Senator Ada said was, I think, close to what I've heard as well, so I'm not, I'm not sure on the specific percentage, but I could get back on it.
I mean, because I think it's important that we know what the standards are, and although there may be many different reasons for what happened with this JFK fiasco is that, you know, and that's the reason why the Attorney General's Office came in with all these contractual safeguards, because a lot of them were not there, and you can always, and you can see that on page 10, with, on line four, is there's the requirement of a performance and payment bond, and, you know, just, of course, you know, it's always best, we've learned from before, and we want to make it better, we want to protect the government, you know, this time. My only concern, as Senator Duenis has started to allude to, is that we cannot just place, have the government be in a position where, you know, we're going to make it almost impossible for anybody else to be able to participate in this bid by making the amount as, you know, sort of exorbitant. Now, if the standard, of course, is 15, and that's a standard practice for everybody, no matter what, for any contractor and developer, and they know that, then, of course, then that means then that, you know, those who have the capability and the resources to do it, then would be the ones to participate. But I never, ever want this government to be able then to make it, or make a requirement to the point that we're definitely going to just sole-source this and give it to one company, or two, or whatever it is, that can afford to do this, and nobody else, because then I think we're doing a disservice and it's an injustice to everybody else when we talk about fair play and be giving everybody an opportunity to participate in the bid process.
Okay, thank you, Speaker Juan Pat. On Senator Ada's amendment, no objections? Motion? Okay, so we'll, we'll go on break, and we'll come back tomorrow to dispose of this amendment. We're on break until nine tomorrow morning.